Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 15th Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. With that being said, we'll call this meeting to order and we will have our roll call.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lauren White wanted me to make the board aware that she had a family emergency this evening with regard to her grandfather and would not be here this evening.
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Okay, if you would stand with me and Commissioner McGlaughlin is going to provide our invocation.
Shall we pray eternal God, we come first of all to thank you. We thank you for this day, we thank you for life, health, and strength. Yes, now God, as you come before this meeting to help us to make the decision that will be pleasing to thee, in thy holy name we pray, amen.
Thank you. If you would remain standing and we're going to invite Malaysia Hankins from North Pitt High School up to do our pledge. Step up to the mic and introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, I am Malaysia Hankins. I am in 10th grade at North Pitt High School. I am currently enrolled in the ROTC program where I'm the second lieutenant. Thank you for having me this evening. At this time, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Malaysia.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, entertaining motion to approve the agenda. They have a motion.
Motion to move agenda with presentations being moved before public address of the board, please.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the change that we're going to move the presentations to number six and the public addresses to number seven. Okay, let's vote. Okay, Madam Manager, I'll turn the presentations over to you.
Yes, and before we go down, if the board would approve the proclamations contained under your list of presentations.
So move.
Got a motion and a second.
All right, and we'll go down front. If Heather Spencer would come up first to join us.
We have a series of presentations this evening that it is my honor to make, and the first one is one I enjoy making every month and it is to celebrate our employee of the month. So for the month of April, we celebrate Heather Spencer, who was selected by her peers for being an invaluable member of Pitt County. She was selected for her knowledge and professionalism, exhibiting the qualities of a sermon leader in the workplace. She exemplifies this by going above and beyond to assist her colleagues. She is also, it is noted that she processed several dental and vision claims and is always proactive, explains things clearly, and your dedication to serving others is commendable, says your nominator. And Heather was one of the few that had more than one nomination to the employee of the month. Heather has served Pitt County for over seventeen years, began her career with Pitt County as a detention officer, and currently serves as our human resources technician. So with that, it is my pleasure to have the chairman present to you a certificate of recognition for employee of the month, April 2024, presented to Heather Spencer, Human Resources, in recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County government and the citizens we serve, along with a $100 check to thank you.
On behalf of the commissioners.
Thank you so much. Then we have a series of proclamations. April is a very busy month, and the first one, Jessica Williams will come forward. Jessica is our human relations coordinator for Pitt County government, and she is working with several community partners to recognize April as National Fair Housing Month. And if I could read it for the group of proclamation recognizing National Fair Housing Month as April 2024. It says, whereas April 2024 marks the 56th anniversary of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 known as the Civil Rights Fair Housing Act. And whereas, this act provides equal housing opportunity for all Americans regardless of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, as well as to ensure fair practice in the sale, rental, and financing of property. And whereas, the Fair Housing Amendment Act of 1988 added new rights, remedies, and monetary penalties, and strengthened enforcement procedures. And whereas, the Fair Housing Act amendments seek to provide equal housing opportunities to affirmatively further housing choices, eliminate legal barriers to equal housing, and to emphasize equal housing as a fundamental human right for all. And whereas, individuals in the county have the right to choose where to live without discrimination based on race, color, religion, age, sex, disability, gender identity, sexual orientation, familial status, or national origin. And whereas, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, state and local governments, fair housing organizations, concerned residents, and the housing industry work together to achieve the goal of fair and affordable housing for all residents. And whereas, Pitt County supports the education of homeowners, realtors, landlords, property managers, homebuyers, and tenants regarding their rights and responsibilities under federal and state fair housing laws. And whereas, Pitt County fully supports the intent and purpose of the Federal Fair Housing Act, local fair housing laws, and policies, policies and practices in order to achieve its goal. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2024 in Pitt County as Fair Housing Month, and encourages all residents of our community to support and endorse fair housing, reaffirm their commitment to fair housing for all, and wholeheartedly recognize these rights and responsibilities throughout the year adopted this 15th day of April 2024, signed by Chairman Mark Smith, attested by Kimberly Hines, clerk to the board. And this will be presented to Jessica Williams, who will further present it at a fair housing event done in collaboration with community partners at the convention center on April 18th later this month. Mr. Chairman, if you'll accept that.
Commissioners, congratulations.
Your next proclamation, if we can have, relates to recognizing Earth Day. If those associated with the Sierra Club and others would come forward who are interested in Earth Day. This year, you may know that manager's office has had a lead for NC AmeriCorps fellow, Abby Kimble, who's in the audience tonight, who has focused on sustainability issues and has been a great educational resource for us as we navigate things within Pitt County as it relates to the environment. And so Abby has been working with various folks, including the Sierra Club, North Carolina Cypress Group, and the North Carolina Museum of Natural Sciences, who will be having an event on April 20th, and we hope that this proclamation will be on display there. And beside me, let's introduce, we have Jeff Monaco, who is the, tell me your title in the Sierra Club.
I'm the chair of the Cypress Group of the Sierra Club.
And?
Member.
Member of the Cypress, okay, excellent. And this proclamation reads, proclamation recognizing Earth Day, April 22nd, 2024. It says, whereas, the first Earth Day was created 54 years ago, recognize the importance of every person in preserving our natural resources, they continue as to serve as an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship commitments, and sustainability efforts. And whereas, the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as global health issues, water shortages, extreme weather, and economic struggles. And whereas, as stewards of the earth, it is our duty to amend behaviors contributing to climate change and environmental degradation, ensuring a healthy, sustainable environment for present and future generations. And whereas, many local community members, businesses, and environmental organizations are working together in the interest of the planet to inspire intergenerational participation through local actions and global environmental consciousness. And whereas, Pitt County is dedicated to sustainability, utilizing resource and energy conservation measures, including alternative fuel vehicles, which we have one in our solid base division, water and energy efficient appliances, and waste diversion and reduction strategies, and you've seen that in our litter campaigns as well. Whereas, Pitt County provides environmental education to the community through presentations and workshops, covering topics such as recycling, stormwater pollution prevention, and natural resource conservation. And whereas, Pitt County encourages environmental stewardship through initiatives such as an anti-litter campaign, enforcement of repairing and buffer protection, outdoor recreational opportunities, and a community garden. And whereas, the Sierra Club, North Carolina Cypress Group, and the North Carolina Museum of Natural Sciences, Rainbow Potentia Creek, have partnered to host an Earth Day celebration on April 20th, 2024, to provide an opportunity to spend the day in nature, enjoying all our earth has to offer, and this proclamation will be on display at the event to show Pitt County's support for our environment. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2024 as Earth Day in Pitt County, and encourage all residents to participate in sustainability and environmental stewardship initiatives, and to encourage others to take similar action. Adopted this 15th day of April 2024, signed by Mark Smith, Chairman, attested by Kimberly Hines, clerk to the board.
On behalf of the board of commissioners, congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Appreciate it.
Yes. Our next proclamation is for Resilient and Thriving Communities Week. Angela Ramsden and her team would come forward. And you will introduce yourselves. Angela Ramsden.
Good to be here.
And Danielle Evans. Excellent, and they join us this evening to receive a proclamation recognizing Resilient and Thriving Communities Week, which is April 28th to May 5th, 2024. And this is something we've done for several consecutive years now. And it reads, whereas, resilient and thriving communities are vital to our state's future health, success, and prosperity, to ensure a strong foundation for everyone at all ages and stages of life. And whereas, the science is clear that resilience is built, and that communities and systems play a key role in promoting safe, secure, nurturing environments for all. And whereas, adverse childhood and life experiences, adverse community environments, and adverse climate events impact overall quality of life and well-being of an entire community. And whereas, helping North Carolina 2030 have toured health by the North Carolina Institute of Medicine, in partnership with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public Health identifies reduction of adverse childhood experiences by 25% by 2030 as a goal. And whereas, it is our collective responsibility to collaborate in a nonpartisan fashion to promote positive experiences, secure relationships, and supportive environments to buffer stress and adversity, to support local resilience coalitions, collaborative task forces, and initiatives across the state. And whereas, investing in policies, programs, and strategies that address adversity and strengthen community resilience is essential to the health of our state. And whereas, the state of North Carolina encourages individuals in all sectors, public and private, early childhood through post-secondary education, faith-based organizations, healthcare systems, justice systems, social services systems, businesses, and elected leaders to collaborate to strengthen our communities. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 28th through May 5th, 2024 as Resilient and Thriving Communities Week in our community, and commend its observance to all citizens adopted this the 15th day of April 2024, signed by Chairman Mark Smith and attested by Kimberly Hines, clerk to the board.
On behalf of the board of commissioners, congratulations.
Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. We have two more. And Mr. Chairman, you and I will read. The next one is proclamation recognizing Economic Development Week, which is May 6th through 10th, 2024, and it reads, whereas, economic development efforts promote economic well-being and quality of life in Pitt County. And whereas, economic development is strengthened by partnerships to promote a shared vision for enhanced prosperity, thriving businesses, and vibrant communities. And whereas, economic developers in partnership with industries, educators, local and state government, and other partners work to enhance Pitt County's business climate, the economic stability, and mobility of our citizens, and our competitive advantage for new industries, developers, and investors. And whereas, local government economic development efforts facilitate the creation, retention, and expansion of jobs and investments that sustain and grow our tax base, and enable Pitt County to provide consistent and quality services for our citizens and businesses. And whereas, economic developers work in Pitt County and throughout the state of North Carolina, and furthermore, recognize that we are all stakeholders in economic development. Now therefore, this Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize the importance of the efforts of economic developers, our role as county government, and the contributions of these efforts towards more prosperous communities, citizens, and businesses by proclaiming May 6th through May 10th as Economic Development Week. This is adopted by the Chairman Mark Smith on April 15th, 2024, attested by Kimberly Hines, clerk to the board. And this proclamation will be presented in a series of events that week in May that celebrate Economic Development Week in our community. Kelly Andrews is Pitt County Economic Development's Director. She is not with us this evening because she is attending an economic development event where she's recruiting new and diverse businesses to our community, and so we accept this on her behalf and share it with you all. And finally, the last one is a proclamation recognizing National County Government Month, which is April 2024. And we have many county employees in this room, so this is for you all and those that are not here. And this reads, National County Government Month, April 2024, Forward Together. It reads, whereas, the nation's 3,069 counties, parishes, and boroughs serve more than 330 million Americans, providing essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas, counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas, Pitt County government and all counties take pride in our responsibility to enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our community by advocating for and providing quality services in a friendly and cost-effective manner. And whereas, under the leadership of the National Association of Counties President, Mary Jo McGuire, NACO is highlighting county leadership through the lens Forward Together, celebrating the role of county governments in connecting, inspiring, and leading as intergovernmental partners. And whereas, that role includes a responsibility to inspire county residents to engage with their communities and lead by highlighting our strengths as intergovernmental partners. And whereas, each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2024 as National County Government Month, and encourages all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in the government month's celebration activities. Adopted this 15th day of April 2024 by the Chairman, attested by the clerk, and be on the lookout throughout the course of this month for various social media messaging. We have short videos that have been put out, three of them. One was done by Misty, another one by Tim Corley, and one by Jimmy Hodges in our 911 Center, all demonstrating how we connect, inspire, and lead our community. At the center of the month is this proclamation, and it goes out with heartfelt gratitude to all of those who perform county government services day in and day out.
Okay, we will move on to our public addresses, and I will yield to counsel to let him read our procedures, and then we will start from the top of the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
And our first name is Jeff Thomas. If you would, come to the mic and introduce yourself.
Commissioner, I can, me and Marcus switch places, we're reading off the paper.
Sure.
And thank you, sir. Jerry wants to lead up the first off, right? Oh, you don't? What you got? Is that where? Go ahead, kick it off, and I'll follow and check.
Come on up. Everybody get their opportunity.
Here, if you don't start my three minutes, I'll get my stuff straight here. I'll remember to bring a bottle of water to fight the cat in the mouth, which I get every time I get up here.
Okay, I'll do. That's Jerry.
Good evening, Commissioners. Last Monday, April 8th, it came to my attention quite by accident that you had secured a deal to donate our Pitt County Confederate soldiers monument and move it out of the county forever. Per your published agenda, you are planning to complete that deal at tonight's meeting by approving item number 15 on your consent agenda labeled as Confederate Monument Donation Resolution and Agreement. I am disappointed that this noble monument was taken down in June of 2020 after a vote by this board. I see, I know two commissioners did not support that action, one of them is here tonight. I am disappointed that our small band of Southern patriots that repeatedly contested the removal of this monument was ignored, meeting after meeting. I am disappointed that this monument stood for over a century and survived extreme heat, extreme cold, fierce summer thunderstorms, and even hurricanes. It endured through the Depression, World War I, World War II, racial segregation, the Civil Rights Movement, and countless other local, national, and international events. I am disappointed that although this monument was funded and raised by the United Daughters of the Confederacy and dedicated to the soldiers who gave their last full measure for their homeland, and therefore was donated afterwards to the people of Pitt County, you have chosen to disparage their donation in the memory of our brave soldiers. I am disappointed that you would denigrate the memory of Confederate soldiers who were designated as American veterans by Congressional Act IX approved in March of 1906, U.S. Public Law 810 approved by Congress in February 1929, and U.S. Public Law 85-425 approved by Congress in May of 1958. These actions were enacted to reconcile the divide between the North and South and commemorate the valor with which our Confederate soldiers served, and to acknowledge the distinguished service of their descendants in defense of the United States of America. I am a veteran as well. I am disappointed that the work and recommendation of the Monument Relocation Committee was apparently cast aside. As one of four non-elected citizens assigned to that committee, I find it inexcusable that I was not notified of this impending deal to remove our Confederate monument from Pitt County forever. In this matter, you as the Board of Commissioners have failed in your duty to operate transparently and within your code of ethics. Shame on you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll read that again. Martin Carey.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everybody. Martin Carey, from Aiden. Part of the committee supporting a total restoration of the Confederate monument that we've been wanting for a while. And when I say the restoration, the complete restoration of the monument, and we're concerned of how much is left because right now, all we have is a picture of just the capstone. We don't have, we don't know where any of this is, and we have the video of the whole bottom being jackhammered, destroyed. That being said, how much funding is left to restore the monument like it was supposed to be when we originally discussed this in the past? How much money is involved? And what resolution can we come up with to restore it? We'd like to keep it here in Pitt County or county neighboring by, but as you all know, as of April 14th, this came into play. As y'all will get emailed. I'm sure y'all already have it. We're in a different legal battle now outside of our hands, as the local community is now in the hands of the SCV lawyers, and they're going to go through this in a complete legal process, even if it comes down to lawsuits, whatever. We're hoping there can be a simpler way to resolve this problem. The law's of H. Edward Phillips, LLC, license in Tennessee, 1994, and North Carolina, 2002, right of Franklin, Tennessee, shows where they have sentenced to everybody on this board. And they are saying, "This letter is sent to your office on behalf of my clients in North Carolina Division of Sons of Confederate Veterans, Incorporated, regarding the Pitt County Confederate Monument, an object of remembrance, a significant part of our state and Pitt County's history and heritage. We understand this object of remembrance was removed from a prominent location on Pitt County property in violation of GS 100-2.1, which requires that a monument, memorial, or work of art on a public property may not be removed, relocated, or altered in any way without the approval of the North Carolina Historical Commission, except for necessary action to physically preserve the monument understood as preservation due to physical problems or weakness in the monument itself, and not from exterior sources or due to construction activity." Instead of adhering to Heritage Protection Act and taking steps to correct the existing violation of GS 100-2.1, Pitt County has published a notice of intent to dispose of the county Confederate soldiers monument by donation to a private party. This nefarious, immoral, and unethical action would violate the North Carolina Heritage Protection Act again. This could result in legal action and possibly sanctions against Pitt County by the North Carolina General Assembly for attempting to circumvent their authority. There are several legal challenges concerning possible violations of the Heritage Protection Act by subdivisions of the state that are making their way through North Carolina courts. A recent opinion from North Carolina Court of Appeals on March 19th, 2024. You can pick it up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jeff Thomas?
How y'all doing tonight?
Good, thank you.
I'm here with SCV Sons of Confederate. I'm going to change it up a little bit unexpectedly to my brothers. First of all, I want to say, give thanks to God, to God be the glory. I look at this as a heritage issue, not a race issue. My third great-granddaddy died at Gettysburg in the Confederacy. On my dad's side was Union. He also died in the war. We are a little bit disappointed in what has happened. As y'all got copies right here, general statute requires that the monument, memorial, or work of art on public property may not be removed, relocated, or altered in any way. Just as it says, general statute, that's the law. If I was to break that law, I would be locked up right now. And that's how I feel about it. Proud descendant of Confederate veteran, this is my third great-granddaddy, Abram Manning. As y'all see, heritage is important. We all have heritage, whether it be African-American, black, white, Puerto Rican, Mexican, Asian. I got a mess-
I got a messed, mixed-up family. I say messed up, it's a mixed-up family. My wife is Filipino, my son is interracial, and me, of course, I'm a white man. And I share my family values and heritage with my family. My son knows all about the African-American side, and he also knows about the Union side and Confederacy. Our children need to know what our history is all about. That's just a monument, it's just a stone, but our history is important, and we can fight all day long about it, but there has to be some kind of resolution to this, and it can be done peacefully. We don't want any lawsuits or anything, we just want it back, put it back where it belongs so that all our families can know about it, whether it's good or bad. I mean, you look at the Bible, there's good and bad in there. There's good and evil, but we all go to church, I hope so, and we share both sides, good and evil. So that's pretty much what I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Daniel Coy? Or is it Cox?
I'm just here for moral support for the monument.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Marcus Carrion is on again. I'm assuming that's a duplicate?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Sharon Rochelle.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Rochelle. I'm the Director of the Department of Social Services here in Pitt County, but more importantly, I am a citizen of Pitt County as well. I just wanted to come tonight, first of all, to thank all of you for the great work that you do on behalf of the county. I also want to just bring to your attention that last, it was April ninth, we, the Department of Social Services conducted their budget presentation to the DSS Board, and it was quite lengthy, but I would ask you all to at least take some time to be able to look at that board, the budget presentation that we did, and it's on the YouTube channel under twenty twenty-four, four nine, Pitt County Department of Social Services Board Meeting. As you look through that presentation, you're going to see a few things. We've asked for new positions. I will tell you that the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has come up with a caseload study of the exact number of cases that we should be carrying on the child welfare side, and we are out of compliance, and even with our vacancies filled, we will still not come into compliance. I also want you to take a look towards the end of the budget presentation is the economic impact that the Department of Social Services has on the county. So we look at the Medicaid dollars that come in, so the multiplier is anywhere from every Medicaid dollar we bring back into the county, one point five to two point zero dollars, and same with the Food and Nutrition Services, which you all may know as SNAP. Even in our weak economy, one dollar of SNAP benefits brings in a dollar fifty in economic activity. So I just want to point out that every dollar that's invested by our local government for DSS programs, that there are state and federal matching funds that are leveraged. So the economic activity generated is five hundred and seventy-eight point six million dollars. Federal and state reimbursement is twenty-three point one million dollars, and the local money that's provided is twenty-one point five million. So when you multiply the impact, it's creating additional economic activity and local jobs, it's providing essential support to the vulnerable populations in Pitt County, it's preventing economic decline, it's keeping people working, and for those folks who can't get a job, we have a Work First program that gets people trained and back to work, and it also addresses the root causes contributing to poverty and inequality within our community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Teriann Burley.
Good evening. I'm Teriann Burley. I'm the Redetermination Program Manager for Economic Services, and I'm here to discuss the positions that I'm requesting on the budget. I'm requesting twenty-six positions for my unit. Currently, we have sixteen for Food and Nutrition Services, and currently I am requesting three positions. Right now with sixteen caseworkers, we have a total of fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventeen active cases and food stamps currently. That brings about two hundred recertifications per worker each month. That does not include changes, phone calls, or walk-ins that we have in the agency. With additional staff, that would bring it to about a hundred and thirty-one recertifications. Currently, we are not meeting the timeliness for Food and Nutrition. We should be at ninety-five percent. Currently, for February, we were at fifty-six point sixty-three percent of timeliness. For Family and Children's Medicaid, I'm requesting ten Income Maintenance Caseworker Two positions. We currently have sixteen positions. The active Family and Children Medicaid cases in Pitt County is forty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-five. That brings each caseload for a caseworker, two thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine cases, which is two hundred and twenty-seven recertifications that they have to complete monthly. That does not include changes or walk-ins. And of course, we have Medicaid expansion that was effective December first, twenty twenty-three, so that's bringing in additional cases. We still have about twelve thousand more cases that could be current in Pitt County with the Medicaid expansion. And the timeliness rate with the Medicaid is ninety-six point eight percent. We are currently not meeting that. What is helping are the unwind and waivers that the state is giving us, but those will be ending in December. Adult Medicaid, we currently have five positions for Income Maintenance Caseworker Twos. I'm requesting five Income Maintenance Caseworker Twos. We have a total of ten thousand one hundred and sixteen active cases in Pitt County for Adult Medicaid. That's your disabled and your sixty-five or older clients. Currently, that brings their caseload to two thousand twenty-three cases, which is a hundred and sixty-nine recertifications a month. And with Adult Medicaid, just like long-term care, CAP, and S.A., you have to look at resources too. With the current positions I'm requesting, that would bring them to about a hundred and one recertifications a month. Then there's long-term care, CAP, and special assistance. That's your nursing home, your assisted living, in-home service. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Candace Franklin.
Good evening. My name is Candace Franklin, and I am also from Pitt County Department of Social Services. And I just kind of wanted to come as, in addition to Mrs. Rochelle and Teriann, who just went before me, and kind of talk about our budget and what we're asking for in the budget this year. One of the things that I wanted to ask of you is when you look at that presentation or you look at, you know, what positions we're asking for this year, I think in the past, we have not been granted positions because of vacancies. And so this time, I want you guys to kind of look past the vacancies. We've done a lot of work in trying to recruit staff, to get people to come to Pitt County and work, but one of the things is that we are understaffed. And so when we are trying to attain or obtain new positions or new people to come from other counties to come and work in Pitt County, if they are familiar with DSS and how things work, one of the first questions they ask is, "How many positions is this unit staffed for? How many positions, you know, how many workers do you have?" And when they hear that we only have eight workers that are working APS or five workers in this program or two, that is a deterrent for other individuals that work in other counties that are possibly looking at coming to Pitt County. So one of the things that we want to do with this year is try to get up to speed. There have been some programs in adult protective services or adult services, excuse me, that have not been granted positions in a long time. One of those program areas is our guardianship unit. I think when I was looking back, there was one position that was granted to us in twenty twenty-one, but prior to that, it was nineteen ninety-seven before positions were granted in that program area. And so that puts us behind the eight ball. And so I think in twenty twenty-two, in October, the state came in, they did a review of adult services, and we were in corrective action because we are not meeting the state guidelines. We are not protecting people, protecting our elderly population in the way that we can, the way that we should, and that's in part because we don't have the manpower. So we worked really, really hard to get out of corrective action with the state, and that took the entire division, that took pulling people from different program areas to work APS and to work guardianship. And so we've pulled ourselves out of that hole, and we're doing better now as far as providing protection and providing services, but we need your help to stay there. We want to continue to serve the citizens of Pitt County. We want to provide protection, we provide protection for those people, but we need your help, and we do need those additional positions so that we can stay out of corrective action so that we can make sure that we're meeting our state mandates. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Suggs.
My name is Charles Suggs. I live at eighteen eighty-nine Blackjack Simpson Road in Greenville, and I wanted to come and talk to the board about the EMS service that we have in Pitt County. I'm aware that Aiden is going to be taken over by the county effective July first, but there are some other issues in our county that I think the board needs to be aware of and also work toward a goal with our Emergency Management Office and our Director for EMS Services to come up with a solution to make Pitt County EMS countywide, to also provide more jobs for individuals in that career that would have benefits to do so. I bring this up because I live in the Eastern Pines EMS District, and they were out of service on April sixth, along with Aiden EMS, so we were depending on Winneville, Pac Tolles, and Grifton if something happened in my community, which does very often. Also, I did not know this to today, but I found out that Eastern Pines EMS was out of service last night. So as a taxpaying citizen who has two elderly parents at home or up the road, at night, I feel like when I go to sleep, I should have the comfort in knowing that the EMS service is right down the road. I am aware that you are out at calls, they are out at calls at different times and cannot provide that service. That's when the county can move vehicles around to do so. I've been in the fire service for seventeen years. That has nothing to do with this matter except one thing. I went to a call three weeks ago with a three-year-old not breathing. It took twenty minutes for Pitt County EMS to show up on the scene with this lady in the front yard and her son suffering from an illness. There's not much we can do but help as best we can, but come to find out, one of the daytime units that is based in Simpson was not in Simpson. It was on the way to Aiden to cover for the day. This is not acceptable, and I feel like as a board, y'all need to get on board and ask our county emergency manager and director, "What can we do to provide a good service across the county for EMS?" I don't see what the benefit is this day and time of different entities running our EMS. Life is too important, and it should be one of y'all's main goals is to provide life safety measures for our citizens in the county. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Johnny Way? Is it, or Johnny May?
Mayo. Mayo, your name my own.
There you are. Didn't even see you. I know. Thank you. Welcome back.
My name's Johnny Mayo. I live in the Simpson area. In fact, I've been a fire chief for many years, and some of the older people in my districts, when they, we'll find out or hear about whatever source, that the truck in Simpson's gone, the Pines is not running today, or whatever, it's, who's protecting me? How long it gonna take them to get here? You know? It seems to me that on some of these private squads, it's poor management if you can't manage your people and think ahead of time who's going to be working, who's not going to be working. I know sometimes people get, they're calling in sick or whatever, but I just hoping y'all see the view that we're talking about and see can y'all come up with a solution and work on a fix before you finally approve your final budget if we have to do what you have to do. But a lot of people calling me, and I was one of them, I have had, I depend on EMS a lot. I've had in-laws, I had a wife over the years and all, and they sit there when you got an emergency and you wait, you wait, you wait, you wait, you wait, you wait, and you're just looking at somebody that's laying in the floor or on a bed with a heart attack or whatever, and they keep saying, "Where's EMS truck? Where's EMS truck?" So, you know, I think these people, citizens, needs to know what's going on. A lot of these citizens don't have no idea. They think nine-one-one, the truck gonna be there in just a few minutes, but if you got run slammed from Aiden, Grifton, Beloth, we even haven't come far as Faulkland. So just look at this situation, see can y'all come up with a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Deborah Connor.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Connor, and I'm an Income Maintenance Caseworker Two. Food and Nutrition Program is in the red term in the department. It's an honor to stand before you today and talk about the role as the Income Maintenance Worker Two in my department. Our work bridges the gap between policy, practice, ensuring that our program operates efficient, effectively, and compassionately. My caseload is eleven hundred and forty-eight due to research coming back every six months. An average monthly recertification drop on us is anywhere from one hundred and ninety to two, three hundred. Within having a vacant caseload, we have the phone calls, messages, recertifications. We have to do all of this in a timely manner. They are assigned out to us evenly on a daily average. We get anywhere from fifty to a hundred and fifty phone calls. I'm sure some of you know that because you get some of those same phone calls. As COVID waivers between lifted and having to interview more and more clients within the year, our previous recertifications, we are struggling in the food stamp redetermination. It's real stressful, it's challenging, we struggle hard, we work sometimes from seven-thirty to seven o'clock at night, and we are trying our best, our very best, to make Pitt County a good DSS place, a good place to work for our community and for ourselves. That's it.
Thank you.
Keisha Adams, Counsel.
Good afternoon. My name is Keisha Adams, Counsel, and I'm a Pitt County DSS employee. I'm the Program Manager for Child Protective Services. Thank you for your time this evening. I stand before you, like other DSS employees, to advocate for new positions with the budget. Like I said, I'm the Program Manager for CPS. We are charged with protecting children, child safety. We work with families to empower them to hopefully, so that they can make some life changes when we get involved so that we can get out of their lives as quickly as possible. And currently, we are positioned, we have thirteen full-time positions budgeted for Child Protective Services investigative assessments. Out of those thirteen positions, currently we have six vacancies. We also received the reports of abuse and neglect, so we have two intake workers. We have no vacancies at this time. We just hired somebody and they started today, so intake is covered. However, we do have an employee that's not working for some personal reasons. We are mandated by North Carolina, our caseload sizes are supposed to be ten. Our social workers to do their jobs effectively and efficiently are supposed to carry between ten cases. Right now with our vacancies, we have approximately three hundred and eight Child Protective Services cases, and with the vacancies, our social workers are carrying anywhere between twenty-nine to sixty cases when they're only supposed to have ten. I started in Pitt County in two thousand and six as an investigator, and during my time... started in Pitt County in 2006 as an investigator, and during my time as an investigator, I had 50-plus cases that I had to carry, and at that time, caseload sizes were 10. I like working in Pitt County. I love being a social worker. I love working with families to try to help them through those crisis times and motivate them to do some things differently. But it's hard when you don't have the time to invest and engage with families like you would like to, what you went to school for, what your passion is for, because you're overloaded and you're basically just hitting one crisis to the next. As the program manager, I hear a lot that I don't care about my staff, that we don't understand, but we do care, we do understand. I empathize and I sympathize because I've been in that position as an investigator. I had six people start with me when I started in 2006 because Pitt County had vacancies then due to the caseload sizes. We have a reputation of having excessive caseload sizes, so that's why it's hard for us to get people to come to Pitt County.
Thank you.
Sloane Rose.
Hi, I'm Sloane. I'm an in-home services social worker here at Pitt County DSS. I've been at Pitt County for a year and a half, and you probably won't believe this, but I am the oldest working in-home social worker. So I've been here for 18 months, and nobody beats me out on how long they've worked in in-home, so 18 months is our longest. I've served, in my time at Pitt County, 110 kids in Pitt County. I go to sleep at night and I think of kids who want to be astronauts, and I think I hope that they can be an astronaut someday. I think of all 110 kids. We're supposed to have 10 cases. Right now I have 14, so I only have 21 kids right now, which seems really low to me. At my highest, I had 18 cases. And when I thought about coming up here to talk to you guys, I thought, let me give you guys a day in my life, but I can't. I'm a social worker, so I get calls that say, hey, we only have one jar of peanut butter left for this, for our four or five kids. Can you fix this right now? And I say, yes, I'm a social worker. I get calls that say, hey, we're in a crisis situation. Can you come help me right now? And I say, yes. I've worked till 1 a.m. I have lovely coworkers who have helped me, but I wanted to share with you guys that I've served 110 kids of Pitt County, and that's probably too many for only working here for a year and a half, because our caseloads are just very high. I love my job, and I really do, but I wanted you guys to know that 110 kids is too much. I love them all, but 110 kids is a lot. I know that we're asking for more positions, and I would like to echo all of my DSS people and say that I think that's a really great idea, and I'm really excited for the future of Pitt County DSS. But 18 cases, when we're supposed to have 10, is a lot. So I hope that that's something that you guys will take into consideration, is that this is, this is me, and I am an in-home services social worker, and I've served 110 kids, that you guys serve as well. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The last person signed up to speak is Colleen Anderson.
I'm Colleen Anderson, and I also work for Pitt County Department of Social Services. I'm a program manager of in-home services. So as Sloane already shared with you, we've had 100% turnover in in-home services. She is the longest worker that we've had here. And I just kind of wanted to talk to you guys about what turnover and high caseloads do when we're trying to serve our families, not just how it affects our workers, but how it affects our families that we work with. So obviously, it affects the amount of time that the workers can spend with the families. While they're there to monitor and ensure safety, they have to facilitate a change. They have to motivate these families to address behaviors like substance abuse, mental health, domestic violence, all of these that directly impact the safety of their children. With high caseloads and less time with their families, come more reports. In-home services works with the families after the report comes in and the family's been found to need help, but then if a new report comes in, they're working on whatever's already been identified, and they're investigating that new report. With new reports, come legal action. We end up filing more petitions, taking more families to court for compliance, and then sometimes for custody. Without enough staff, we're not serving our community well. Our job is an awesome responsibility. We take care of children. We ensure that they're safe, and we need more people to be able to do it effectively.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of our speakers tonight. It's always good for you to come up and share your concerns and issues. We'll move on to items for report, and first up is Pitt County Arts Council, and I'll invite Holly to come up.
Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight?
We're here.
All right. Well, I want to first thank you so much for your partnership with the Pitt County Arts Council. Just a little bit of history, we are the designated partner to the North Carolina Arts Council, and in our 100 counties, we have over 800 county arts councils. This was, actually, the county commissioners designated us to be the Pitt County Arts Council in 2009. We were without an arts council for almost two decades, and we take that responsibility very greatly to serve our entire county through the arts. So we are the umbrella organization for our arts organizations, our cultural organizations and artists, and we offer a lot of different services to them, which I'll get into right now. So our, this past year, our board of directors went through an extensive strategic planning session, sessions, many. We received a grant from the North Carolina Arts Council to be able to hire Fountain Works, a consultancy agency, that took us through the entire county, listening to our stakeholders as to what is, what our community needed from us. And I will pass out these focus areas. I'm going to be talking about the first one, which was serving all of Pitt County through the arts. And so these are a few things, just a few, that we have done this last year throughout the county, and this doesn't count all that we do at our offices and facilities at Emerge Gallery and Art Center. Number one, we have sub-granted over $200,000 to arts organizations, artists, and for performances throughout Pitt County. We're really taking a strong look at continuing our services in Greenville, but getting out to all the municipalities. And one of the ways is through our grassroots grants program. This is our main responsibility as the Pitt County Arts Council, and every one of our 100 counties receives grassroots funds from the North Carolina Arts Council. The North Carolina legislature actually doubled this amount to be able to serve our arts organizations. And when you think about it, Pitt County doesn't have an arts commission. City of Greenville doesn't have an arts commission. We do have some recreation departments who do arts programming, but it's really left up to our nonprofit organizations, arts organizations, to provide visual arts, theater, dance, or just that cultural essence, music, and a lot of times that falls to private nonprofits. One example of our performances, we just had Ranky Tanky, a two-time Grammy Award-winning band. We brought them to the Paramount Theater in Farmville. That was part of our African-American music series that's typically held at Emerge Gallery the second Friday of each month. Last Friday, we had Chrissy DeShiel at the State Theater. Last year, we brought Reece Palmer, who was one of the first black country stars to win a country award. Now Beyonce has topped that chart, but Reece was the first, and we brought her to the Aiden Auditorium last year. Just a reminder that we oversee the cultural arts calendar. Everybody says, what is there to do in Pitt County? We have a comprehensive calendar that we share with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. If you go to Visit Greenville NC, that website has the same calendar. Ours is filtered for arts and cultural events, and it is a full-time job monitoring this calendar. We have a lot going on. We are also the civic arts facilitator for Pitt County, the city of Greenville, the town of Aiden, town of Farmville, and town of Winterville. All, we have resolution stating that we're the civic art facilitator, and one of the ways we achieve our job for that is our Downey Sculpture Exhibition, and this is throughout, throughout the county. We have sculptures in Farmville, Aiden, Winterville, as well as Greenville, and are adding every year to that. This is a great way of accessibility. I really think public art is the most accessible form of art. It's out 24/7, no matter what, you're engaging with it, and it's really great to be able to bring large-scale sculpture to our community. We've also been able to expand our youth public arts project. We have kids from all over the county coming to a free program at Emerge Gallery. Every other Saturday, half the day, they learn how to play the piano, and we just received a grant from Ben Folds for our Keys for Kids program, as well as the North Carolina Arts Council and private funders to fund this. Half of the day, they also do public art projects, and we're really excited. Next month, they'll be in Grifton, painting planters next to a Time for Science and learning about native plants in eastern North Carolina. We've also been able to expand this last fiscal year, our Artist's Good Medicine Program. We send artists to the hospital weekly, to the Children's Hospital, to the Cancer Center, and also to the Hope Lodge. And this next year, our goal is, actually, we've already expanded one to two days in the chemo bay, so when people are getting chemotherapy, we have an artist there, because it takes a long time to take them through an art activity, and we're also looking to expand into the maternity department for mothers who are on bedrest as well. We are the lead coordinator for the Youth Arts Festival, and this has been going on for 19 years. I really want to bring this to your attention, because this past year, we were rained out, and we moved the festival to South Central High School. Our wonderful partnership with Pitt County Schools has just brought this festival to a new level. At the rain site, we had over 5,000 people come to it. It was a new record. We had over 700 performers, mainly students from Pitt County schools. Their teachers are incredible. But the real highlight of this festival, not just the day of, is that our sponsorships, we work really hard to get private sponsorships for the festival, and all those proceeds, 100% of the proceeds, go to the Pitt County Arts Educators Fund. A lot of our arts teachers use their own money for materials, supplies, equipment, and for the last three years, this will be the third year we've done this, we will be sending $12,000 a year to help with their budgets. Some of these arts teachers have a $500 budget for the entire year. So I'm not going to be talking too much about, or at all about next year, but I had to fit this in. We are planning the Mosaic Multicultural Arts Festival for September 21st on Greenville Town Common. Many of you might have remembered the Greenville International Festival, and that was absorbed into Pirate Fest and then just became something different, and we are working with stakeholders from the city of Greenville, Pitt County, ECU, Pitt Community College, to create this festival. We're so excited to be able to celebrate our multicultural community here, right here in our backyard, as far as who they represent in different cultures. And lastly, just had to speak about the Emerald Express, which is, I mean, the Emerald Loop, which is our largest public art project to date that the Arts Council has taken on. We were, we've received two federal grants to kick this off, and a state grant and a federal grant, and we have a lot of stakeholders part of the Emerald Loop. This last year, in conjunction with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we've been able to rent the Emerald Express trolley from the city of Greenville, and to offer free rides to our community the first Friday of every month. Next year, when I come back to give my annual report to you, I will be talking about the Town Common Emerald Loop Art Shelter, which commemorates the Shore Drive neighborhood at Town Common. We're going to be dedicating that during Juneteenth weekend, but if you want to go down to Town Common and see it, it is there. It's very exciting, and a lot more to come next year when it comes to lighting, intersection murals, and all of it's culminating together. And the last thing that we've done throughout the county this last year is we, because of support from the Economic Development Department of Pitt County and the Greenville ENC Alliance, we were able to be a part of a national study with the Americans for the Arts, showing the economic impact of the arts, and also spotlight just Pitt County. And this, this report shows the economic impact of nonprofit arts organizations. And I just want to, please read this on your own, and let me know if you'd like me to go through the details with you individually, but I just wanted to point out that our economic impact of nonprofit arts organizations is over $18 million, and that was just in 2022. That was just getting over COVID too. And the other thing is when people go to a cultural event, they're spending over $33 on out-to-eat, childcare, parking, all different things, but one thing that the arts do is leverage economic impact. It is generating so much impact for our city and our counties, towns, city and county. And when Ranky Tanky came to Farmville, you could not find a parking space in downtown Farmville. The restaurants were packed, and I think it just really shows you how that can help grow our communities. So that is a quick spotlight on some of the things we've done this last year, and I thank you so much for your support of the arts.
Thank you, Holly. We'll move on to the monthly financial reports, and ask Sam to come up.
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Commissioners, Madam Manager. Tonight I bring you the March 2024 financial report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the EMS Fund. We are nine months into the fiscal year. At this point, we're 75% of the year. For the General Fund, we have collected 76.2% of the anticipated revenues and spent 66.4% of budgeted expenditures. Solid Waste, we have collected 87.9% and spent 60.8%. EMS, we have collected 88.9% and spent 72.5%. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for a motion to approve the monthly financial report as presented.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion and a second. Thank you, Sam. We'll move on to the tax collection report. Russell?
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Commissioners, Madam Gallagher. This evening I bring to you the March 2024 collection report. The Pitt County fiscal year to date through March 31st, 2024, combined collection rate for real and personal property was 98.55%. The combined collection rate one year ago for real and personal property was 98.47%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina general statute. If there are no questions, it's my recommendation to approve the March 2024 tax collection report as presented.
We have a motion here. A second?
A second.
Good. Let's vote. Thank you, Russell. Appreciate your report. We'll move on to the manager's report. Madam Manager?
Yes, thank you. I have a few items for you this evening. First are your next meeting dates, May 6th at 6:00 p.m. in this auditorium. May 7th through 9th at 8:30 in the morning will be your budget workshops in this room, and then on May 20th will be your second meeting in the month of May. Also, to add, which is not on your list, just a reminder, that you will have your legislative luncheon with your local delegation this Friday, April 19th at 12 o'clock. luncheon with your local delegation this Friday, April 19th at 12 o'clock at the Alice Keen District Park Meeting Room. So I hope all Commissioners can attend that event to meet with our delegation. 12 o'clock this Friday. Also want to recognize our employee service awards as we do each quarter. And if I can call them out, we have employees who are our greatest asset to this organization celebrating major milestones in their time of public service. Celebrating five years is Jessica Andrews in detention, Jacqueline Atkinson in social services, Jason Bryant in planning, Jennifer Davenport in emergency management, Tammy Jin in public health, Derek Haskins in public health, Tiffany Hunt in emergency management, Cleavon Hunter in social services, Latonya Johnigan's Godfrey in public health, Matthew Kern in the Sheriff's Office, Shantonia Lewis in social services, James Lindsay in Pitt Area Transit, Joseph Main in detention, William McCabe in detention, Jonathan Mills in emergency management, William Roberson in detention, Alicia Santiago Corona in social services, Thomas Snell in emergency management, Barbara Taylor in social services, Trinesha Taylor in social services, Miguel Velazquez Fernandez in the Sheriff's Office. We have four celebrating 10 years. Teresa Cincinnatus in the Sheriff's Office, Sonia Downing in public health, Jennifer Green in public health, and Colleen Ross in detention. Celebrating 15 years of service with Pitt County Government is April Belsky in emergency management, Stephen Branch in emergency management, Tasha Keisha Brown in detention, Catherine Crisp in the manager's office, Natalie Harris in public health, and Tamika Snead in detention. Celebrating 20 years, we have Ronald Fair in detention, Jennifer Fowler in social services, Timothy Hines in detention, Nancy Huer in social services, Rudy Newsome in detention. Celebrating 25 years of service with Pitt County Government is Dolly Bryant Dawson in JCPC Juvenile Restitution. And we have one 30-year recipient this quarter, Nancy Wilson in the legal department. All of these recipients, whose names have been called, will come tomorrow morning at 8:00 for a breakfast reception in this room to receive their certificates during their workday. And we encourage any Commissioners who can attend to celebrate with them to come at 8:00 tomorrow morning in this room. Item D, just to make you aware, although there wasn't a special proclamation, April 14th to 20th is Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. You may have seen a press release that went out today, but this is a week that's celebrated every year, the second full week in April, from the 14th to the 20th this year. Its purpose is for communities to be encouraged to learn about what the job really entails and to be grateful for those who are in them. Our staff at Pitt County Animal Services works hard every day to ensure that lost homeless and in need pets of our community remain happy, healthy, and at home with their families. And as such, during the course of this week, they'll be sharing the many roles, jobs, and tasks that shelter workers and animal control officers take on every single day. To show appreciation, Chad Singleton, our Director of Animal Services, will have a kickoff party for his staff on Monday of that week. He'll bring in breakfast on Tuesday of that week. He'll have lunch with the Director at Alice Keen Park on Wednesday of that week. He'll have the Green Street Bridge lit yellow in recognition of Animal Care and Control Week, and a photo opportunity on the bridge at 7:00 PM that evening. He'll bring cake and ice cream for his staff on Thursday, and he'll have an awards presentation on Friday to recognize his animal control officer and shelter employee of the year. So I'm thrilled at what Chad Singleton is doing to recognize this week for his staff and any board members who have any desire to pop in during that week, feel free to do so.
Isn't this the first time today?
I think so. I think so. Your next item is to let you know that for 2025, I'm going way ahead for you this year, a year and a half from now, Pitt County has been selected, I learned from Andrew Schmidt at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, that Pitt County has been selected to host the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. This will be our third time doing it. The first two times, we had an officer in the rotation within the organization. This year, we do not, or next year, we do not. But I think that speaks volumes to what we have to offer in this community. And staff will gear up to be sure that we have a successful conference, and we will enjoy all of the revenues that that brings to our community as the Commissioners from across the state gather in Pitt County, August 20 to 24, 2025. You'll also see a booth when you go to the conference this year in August, which is in Forsyth County. You'll see a booth set up by our Convention and Visitors Bureau, advertising and passing out promotional materials, encouraging people to attend the conference in Pitt County the following year. It's a big deal. Also, Pitt County is getting a look, not only locally and statewide, but also nationally. Wanted to make the board aware of a program that is being hosted. Some of you may be familiar with a program called Viewpoint with Dennis Quaid. It runs on public television, and it is an educational series that provides educational materials to their viewership in all 50 states on different topics, mini-program topics. And they are doing a topic, they're doing a mini-series program called Discover America: Great Places to Live, Work, Start a Business, and Raise a Family. And this national production company has selected four jurisdictions within the United States of America, Northeast, Southeast, Northwest, and Southwest. And Pitt County, North Carolina, was selected for the Southeast to represent all of the really cool things that we have going on here that make us a great place to live, work, start a business, and raise a family. As a result of this spotlight, which is 100% educational, this is public television, we will receive a three- to five-minute public television segment that is about education to inform viewers on the latest topics and trends impacting the world, consistent with this theme. It will be distributed national. It will be a short-form documentary that will be shown bridging the gap between 25 and 55-minute shows on public television. The average segment will air 45 to 60 times per quarter to 60 million households and businesses who will see it. The segment will be hosted by Dennis Quaid, and it must remain educational and informative. We are doing this in cooperation with the ENC Alliance. Maria Satira has been instrumental in helping gather the data for this because it's her area of expertise. So we're grateful for that collaboration as we prepare that documentary. Pitt County will have the ultimate and final approval and say on all script. So we control the message, and we will control the final script to assure that it remains educational and positive for Pitt County Government, consistent with that theme. In addition, we will get a corporate identity video, which will last five to six minutes, along with that same theme that we can put on our website and have rights to forever. And then additionally, we'll have a 60-second or one-minute commercial. He calls it a 60-second documentary, which will air once nationally in all 50 states, 400 times regionally in the top 100 cities based on population, including Chicago, San Francisco, New York City, and Dallas. It will be sent out to 84 million homes through the Viewpoint viewership list that will run peak time and prime time between 6:00 PM and 11:00 PM. And the networks that this will air on will be CNBC, Fox, Business Discovery Channel, and Bloomberg, among others. So wanted to make the board aware of this incredible opportunity to showcase Pitt County. And we were noticed by this production company for some of the more recent advertising that we've done. And what's really cool about this is it targets, and some of you may have heard me talk about and others talk about, our desire to really target, we have targeted our students in our community, those raising children and those retiring. But that business sector of, say, 24 to 40 is really the target viewership in this Viewpoint project. And we will get Pitt County out nationwide, hopefully to encourage businesses and their workforces to take a look at Pitt County Government. One of the things that Viewpoint noticed when they selected us was an article that was in your weekly packet in Livability Magazine. And you may have seen that. But that's the next item that I wanted to bring to your attention, is that Livability, on livability.com, did an incredible article on Pitt County called From Tobacco to Tech and Beyond. And it featured the diversity of our community being a plus for Pitt County companies and their employees in four top industries: advanced manufacturing, food and agriculture, biotech, and other life sciences, and logistics and distribution. So we have a strong presence in Livability Magazine, and our marketing efforts are going to the next level beyond what our Public Information Office is doing in collaboration with our partners from an economic development perspective. Questions about Viewpoint or Livability? All right. And then I have two last things, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Well, actually, just one. I already told you about the legislative luncheon. And that is if Misty Chase would stand up. Misty Chase is your Director of Pitt Area Transit. And I was so thrilled to learn that on Tuesday, April 9th, when she was at the North Carolina Public Transit Association, Public Transportation Association Conference in Concord, that she was recognized with an award for her leadership, drive, and spirit.
All right.
And she is our Pitt Area Transit Director. And so thank you, Misty, for everything you're doing for this community. Misty was instrumental. And those of you who've heard about the transportation collaboration with Pitt Community College, which continues to thrive, she has made some tough, progressive, forward-thinking decisions in our organization. And she, like many of our wonderful department heads, is really making Pitt County proud, not only here, but across the state. So I just wanted to recognize her for that award. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Madam Manager. A lot of exciting news there. I will entertain a motion for items for consent.
Move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Please vote. Then we'll move to items for decision. First up is the proposed improvements to Hines Crossing. I will invite Jonas up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Tonight, we've gotten a request from NC DOT to look at some proposed improvements to Hines Crossing. Hines Crossing is located off of US 13 where Nash-Joiner and Spate Sea Farm Road meet that US 13. The intersection has had a history of some crashes there. There were 21 total crashes, 11 of which of those involved serious injuries. NC DOT proposes to mitigate the angle crashes at this intersection by installing a reduced conflict intersection, or otherwise known as RCI. You might remember there was some discussion about that at a previous board meeting down in Calico. NC DOT and county staff has hosted an informational session back on April the 8th. For the affected property owners, we did not receive very much input at that meeting. NC DOT will fund and perform all the necessary work to complete this proposed modification. You'll see on your screen aerial of the intersection with the RCI overlaid over the existing intersection. The RCI will prevent left-hand turn movements onto US 13 from Spate Sea Farm Road and Nash-Joiner Road. Staff is recommending that the board approves a resolution to support this for NC DOT to make the improvements using safety and high-impact, low-cost funds. And I do have Jeremy Stroud here tonight from NC DOT in the event that you have any questions for him.
Monica?
Good evening, board.
I've got one question. Was a roundabout considered here?
We actually considered multiple mitigation efforts, the first being an always-stop. The ADTs at this intersection, it just blew it out of the water. It would not function. We did consider a roundabout. Our first concept should roundabout right in the intersection. Talking, I talked with one of the adjacent property owners who was in support of it. However, when we got, when we took it back to the drawing board to figure out how we could actually build a roundabout in the location, we had to shift it to the northeast in that agricultural farmland. And by the time we did that, the project was unfundable due to right-of-way impacts, utility, additional payment, that kind of thing. So we didn't, we did, to answer your question, we did consider a roundabout. We just cannot construct one in the middle of the existing intersection, so we would have to shift it. And by doing so, it made the project unfundable with the resources that we have.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Was a stoplight considered?
We did not consider a stoplight at this location initially. Putting a stoplight in a rural area like that tends to have some negative implications just because it doesn't feel urbanized, it doesn't feel like there's development there. And so we did not consider a signal light at this location.
But there is a signal light less than two miles.
As you get closer to the southwest bypass and to duck through. Yes, sir. Yeah.
Any other questions? Commissioner McGowan?
To Jonas, was this unanimous approval by the planning board?
This item has not been to the planning board.
What board was this brought to?
We had a, we had a public input meeting on April the 8th, but no board has seen this other than you.
Okay. I'm sorry.
This comes directly to the Board of Commissioners, and the public input meeting wasn't required. It was just something that we added a layer to be able to answer questions for those in the community and make sure everyone was aware. But these types of improvements are really within the discretion of the Department of Transportation, but they like it to be supported by the community when they take it back for funding.
Okay. Good. Okay. Thank you.
It's a pleasure, the board.
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you.
It says fail, but it passed. Okay.
Tech glitch.
Tech glitch. There are five votes in favor.
Okay. We'll move on to number two, submitted of accessible parks and grant application. Jonas?
Okay. Tonight, come before you again to talk with you about the possibility of submitting an accessible parks and grant. It's designated to benefit individual, individuals with disabilities. All constructed facilities must adhere to the ADA guidelines, and applicants can request up to $500,000 with a 20% match. This grant can be utilized for constructing specialized facilities or modifying existing Staff is recommending that we develop a grant application in order to fund the first components at Lake Glenwood. These amenities would include a parking area, a sidewalk, a picnic shelter, restrooms with the appropriate infrastructure, as well as a trail. Just to let the board know, we've also been in contact with the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission regarding a partnership for eventually establishing a fishing pier as well as a kayak launch and an informational kiosk there at Lake Glenwood. All that's outside of this grant, though. This grant, showing the map here, we're strictly looking at parking, restrooms, and a picnic shelter. I have highlighted the pier as well as the kiosk on the map as well. And then you'll also see the trail that's being proposed. The grant application is due May 1st, 2024, and we anticipate the awards being announced in late August. If awarded, this grant will have a three-year construction or completion project, period, I'm sorry. So our recommendation is to approve the development of an accessible parks grant application in the amount of $500,000 with the approval for the chair to sign the necessary documents. The matching funds and the amount of $100,000 will be covered by the board-approved funds previously designated for park development here.
Any questions?
I'll answer any questions. I'll answer any questions.
It's a pleasure, the board.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Thank you, Jonas, I think you have another one.
The next item is the submittal of a North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Grant. The North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Grant provides a dollar-for-dollar match up to $500,000, local governments for the development of park and recreational projects to serve the general public. Staff recommends developing a grant application in order to fund Phase II of the Office Park Recreation Site north of the river. The proposed improvements for this phase would include a walking trail, a playground area, benches, picnic shelter, restroom building, lighting, and security cameras, as well as any site work and landscaping needed for those improvements. On the map before you, in the green are the improvements that we're proposing. You'll see the restroom building, the picnic shelter, as well as the playground. And just to orient you a little bit, the new gym is located here, closest to the road. Implementing Phase II of the Office Park Recreation Site Master Plan will provide a great opportunity for outdoor activities at the park for those living in northern area of Pitt County, as well as anyone who wishes to visit that site. The grant application is also due May 1st, 2024, and awards will be announced in late August. If awarded, this grant has a three-year completion period as well. So it is our recommendation as staff to approve the development of a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund application in the amount of $500,000 with the approval for the chair to sign the documents. The matching funds will be covered by requested county allocation in the capital improvement plan for '25-'26.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the lighting going to be underground?
No, ma'am, the lighting will be above ground.
But there.
The poles.
Yeah.
Yes, all underground lighting, the wiring, yes.
Got a motion and a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonas. Thank you, Ms. Alice, I'll see you back there.
Okay, next up is the Resolution for America 250 NC Grant, Jessica.
Good evening, Chairman Smith, Commissioners and Manager Gallagher. Tonight, I've come to present to you permission to apply for the America 250 NC Grant. Application also asks for approval for the resolution that was submitted. A little bit of background for the grant. America 250 NC Grants are funded by appropriations provided by the 2023-2025 State Budget and support a variety of public programs, scholarly research, tourism projects, and educational outreach. America 250 NC's goal is to energize broad, robust, and comprehensive programs across all of North Carolina's 100 counties. The application is due May 3rd. There is no county matching funds. The grant award is $10,000. The grant funds will be paid in disbursements tied to grant deliverables. The reporting dates will be provided at the time the grant agreement is signed, if we are selected for the grant. A committee has been formed. If approved, we'll be working on submitting this application. The committee consists of representatives from the Town of Farmville, ECU, and Pitt County. This committee will serve as an official committee for Pitt County, as there can only be one committee per county to receive the grant funds. Pitt County Financial Services has been included in regards to details and plans for this grant, so if approved, the grant funds will be ran through Pitt County Finance Department. We have, as a committee, agreed upon grant activities, which are educational outreach, an essay contest will be under the educational outreach and listening sessions, which the Pitt County HRC has already been working on. And if you guys have questions regarding the grant activities, I will be able to go in detail about that. The proposed timeline, we'll submit a draft application by April 26th for a final review and make changes if needed in order to submit the grant by May 3rd. For 2024, we plan to gather information if selected for the grant, hire and bring on necessary people, and example of that would be a facilitator for the listening sessions, and create a strategic plan. Trainings, outreach, educational outreach, and listening sessions will take place in 2025. The essay contest and online exhibit will take place at the end of 2025. My recommended motion, if no questions, is to adopt the resolution and authorize the county manager to execute all necessary documents related to the grant application. Thank you.
We've got a motion and a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. And last is Madam Manager appointments and reappointments through the groundsman board of the Jessica.
Yes, it is being recommended that you nominate Ricky Harrison, Sr., to fill an unexpired term that will expire June 5th, 2026, and that you reappoint Rebecca Meeks to an additional term that will expire June 30th, 2027.
I've got a motion and many seconds. Let me try again. All right, thank you. We'll move on to Commissioner comments. I'll start down with Commissioner Colson.
Is there any special training that sort of service worker has to have? Do they have to have a college degree or whatever? Is there any possibility that we might be able to solicit from community college and college students that would like to have a job, something that might be able to fill in the gaps, that might take some of the stress off of them, and not break the budget at the same time?
The answer to your question is yes. There are, and we have talked, I've talked with Sharon Rochelle about some opportunities for collaboration with Pitt Community College, particularly in the Income Maintenance Division, because they have, they do not have significant social worker-type degree requirements that are necessary to perform that job, but they all must go through pre-service training. Sharon has also had local employees certified to do the pre-service, and she's been approved to do that here, so we could train folks in groups to help fill those positions. I was not aware that she and her staff were coming this evening. Typically, that would be presented to you during your budget workshops, so that was a bit of a surprise to me. We're reviewing the budget now. We've been working through these numbers. She's asking for 85 new positions. She currently has, on average, about 50 vacant positions. So there's a lot of conversation to be had about how they'll be filled, where they would sit, how they'd be trained, and whether or not that ought to be phased. But you'll be presented with a recommended budget in May. You'll have an opportunity for budget workshops that following week, and you'll have until June before you finalize your budget. I think those would all be great discussions for budget workshop.
So if I heard them right, heard part of it, it sounded to me like some of this backlog was created by the expansion of Medicaid services. Did the state provide anything to pay for these new positions?
The state has provided more than has been necessary. This board in October, in anticipation of a December 1 Medicaid expansion, increased her headcount by 13 new positions, because she said that if I have 13 new positions and all of this state funding, which would be net neutral to your budget, I can get them hired, I can bring them in, I can have them trained and ready to go for December 1, and I won't have this problem.
Assuming you have applicants.
She has had a number of applicants. What we've observed is that they are not staying. So we have, of those 13 positions, 10 are still vacant. And so adding vacant positions to vacant positions may or may not solve the problem.
Do we do exit interviews? We ask anybody that leaves our company, always, why are you leaving? You know, not...
We do both exit interviews, and we've done a lot of work in considering stay interviews. We don't want to wait till they leave until we find out what that feedback is. So we do exit interviews for everybody leaving Pitt County, and we are implementing stay interviews to have open dialogue with those who are here, so we catch them before they leave.
And the reasoning for them leaving is, can you give a general idea? Is it because of the workload that they were talking about?
Yes, I think there are multiple factors. I think one is workload, one is vacancy, one is supervision, leadership, training, and caseload. I mean, the vacant, so Department of Social Services averaging, I mean, on many months, they have 55 vacancies, and it's hard to do the work if you don't have bodies in the positions. And we have worked closely, Human Resources has worked very closely with social services to modify advertising, to streamline the hiring process, right? So you don't see, we have interviews with a group of people for one position, and if there's five like vacant positions, we're not doing five separate groups of interviews. We're interviewing the group, and we're picking five people from that set of applicants to streamline the hiring process. We have changed the way we advertise. We advertise the full range. We have provided flexibility in the salary. The salary doesn't seem to be a pain point. I think what's happening, and I'll tell you some of the, we have a, our employees are not shy to call my office when they want to share their concerns and talk to me and come meet with me, and I hear a lot from social services folks, and much of what I hear has to do with support from their supervisors and drama in the workplace. And so we have worked with Sharon Rochelle to bring in outside folks to help train the supervisors, to give them leadership skills, to help them better manage and supervise. We have a contract with Jennifer Matthews at ECU, who's providing training for those folks, but it is a process that was not created overnight and one that will take some time to complete. I feel for the stress they are under in those caseloads. I think if we could fill the vacant positions and keep folks in those vacant positions that you have, you'd see a tremendous difference. I've heard Sharon say, "I can hire people all day long, I just can't keep them." And if you look at the number of people she's hired, we have to find out why they're not staying. She says they're not staying because of the stress of the workload, and I get that. But even if you added 100 positions tomorrow, the first one who comes on is still going to have stress in that workload. So we've talked about bringing them in in groups, in classes, with a sense of camaraderie that all come on together, and explored all those options, and will continue to have those discussions. I think we have to come up with an effective strategy to address the problem.
So they were, this is my last question. They seem to have a massive amount of new positions they would like to have in addition to what you've already got, and will the, will the North Carolina state, will they be able to support those positions, or are we, the county, going to end up having to pay for some of them?
You will have to, well, they will be state or federal share in the salary, but when you talk about day-to-day support, training, desks, office space, supervision, that's all on the county.
Well, I understand that, but as far as the positions, the state, federal government, they will actually fund all of what we heard was requested tonight?
They will fund portions of each position. So on Medicaid expansion and unwinding, the state gave a huge pot of money that covered all of those 13 positions that you hired, the county's share and the state's share. Going forward, if you add positions, it will cover the state's share, but you'll still have the county's share, and it varies based upon the program. Some is a 70/30, some is a 50/50, some is a 25/35, some is 30%. They all vary based upon the program, with the state contributing some amount and the county contributing some amount. In any new position you approve, you approved 100 of them, the state will give its share to that position, but so must the county.
Okay, I assume you'll cover that in the budget?
All of it in budget. And just to give you some outside sense of what you're talking about, the positions requested are about $2.5 million. It's about a penny and a half on your tax rate if you wanted to add all of them. To me, from a management perspective, we need to come up with, adding 85 positions to 55 vacant positions without a plan is not going to solve your problem. It's just going to eat up funding vacant positions. And so I think there needs to be more to it than that, and I look forward to continuing to work with Sharon. We started those conversations last week, and will continue those conversations until you have a recommended budget, and this will be up to this board to decide how much and how you choose to fund those requests.
I would like to say to the board here, if you look at that meeting, because there was a demonstration to give you some idea as it relates to what the social worker has to deal with, a lot of it, the court requires. And then when that isn't done, there is a penalty coming from Raleigh as to addressing need, and if that's not met, the county has to pay for every single area, error, E-R-R-O-R, that is coming from social services. And that's where I see a real concern, that the stress and the caseload, because they changed the caseload, and that within itself put stress on the workers.
Any other questions, Commissioner Colson?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Well, I don't have any question, but I will add to Commissioner Colson's comments. We have been, we have been working at this ever since I've been on here. Every time, whether it's this social service DSS director or the one before, and we have given more positions that they come and ask for each time. I remember one year, Tom, if you...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I remember.
You know, so this is, and I'm not being unsympathetic to the stress or whatever, but it just seems like that there's a lot of vacancies, and she said you can't keep people, so we're just going to have to continue to take one bite at a time and give, fill vacancies where we can according to our budget, you know. So, and as one worker said, you know, the stress, people don't like to come to Pitt County, and this just didn't, just started, start, she said. You know, I think she said, what, 2009 or something like that? So, yes, we want to, you know, we want to look at their budget when they come and look at the vacancies that they have, and know we, we want to really, you know, we want to keep people, we want to help them with the stress and all, and make a good working, you know, place for us, but we've got a budget. We only have, you know, a certain amount of money to deal with.
Commissioner Huggins, I strongly recommend that you look at, because the details to the social service board, I strongly recommend that you, actually, and even the people in Pitt County as a whole, look at the minute things that they brought up in their presentation that we questioned about. I'm not saying that we just do this, I'm saying that you can understand what little things are, when you have, every time someone new comes in, you have to stop and go back to something else. So if you look at that meeting last Tuesday, you will have a better understanding as to the overall process of what they're doing. I suggest that you do that, not that it might help you understand what they're saying. And I think these were the partner heads or unit leads who were here tonight.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, and I plan to look at it, you know, and it's not that I don't believe them, you know, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, they were concerned that their issues were not brought before us in previous times as it relates to... times as it relate to, and I didn't know they were coming either. But I am pleased that they were brave enough to step up, because they have been concerned that the issues were not brought before the manager. And I know that Janice has worked with them, because I've taken some of the problems to her, for her and Florida to handle. So look at it, please.
Thank you. Commissioner McGowan?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I was certainly concerned about the process of listening to them, but also I know our manager's always on top of things of this nation, and she indicated she was surprised to see the number of people. Just not to say that we don't welcome comments from the staff or the employees, but certainly our manager has been on top of it, and we'll hit the true picture during the budget presentation. I think that's what you mentioned. So I'm pleased that we're going to be looking into this, and we're going to be looking into it in a very important way to make sure that we try to do the best we can do with the means that we have to work with. So, I want to thank you for what you, what you do.
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bergen-Williams. You got anything else?
No, I've said everything. I mean, it's not our manager, but she has been there along with Florida as it relate to the stress and what happens. A group will come in, and they look forward to coming here, but then after a while, they fall off the cliff one by one, and that means when someone leaves, another person have to add that case to their load, and they have to start all over again. That's what I say, you could get a real vivid picture as to the day-to-day life by watching that. We sat through it for two hours.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ward?
No comment, thank you.
Commissioner Alman?
No comment.
Commissioner Alman?
No comment.
Okay, we have a closed session, I think.
Yes, I'm going to get you going. Oh, you got to read it.
Mr. Chair, it's been suggested this body go into closed session under the following grounds. One, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries under North Carolina General Statute 143311A4. And two, to prevent the disclosure of information that is not considered a public record under North Carolina General Statute 143311A.
Thank you, Mal Ever.
We've been inviting Ms. Elton along now with the S.A.
Got some motion and a second.
I'll give you an engineering.
I think like my sister and my other colleagues can do a couple of quick interviews.
Do what? Oh, my God.
It was a pleasure to board.
What was it? What was the question?
I have a request to take a short break, so I'm sure.
Okay, welcome back. We have a motion for the close, I mean, for the minutes.
I'd like to make that motion, please.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. And the second.
From March 4th.
From March 4th, thank you. Please vote.
Vote. Mr. Chair, I like the awful motion. I did vote.
Vote again.
Okay. I like the awful motion.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. And a second.